I can't really see if people are coming in and is Ben on yet?
There are some people attending. I haven't seen Ben join yet.
Okay. So we'll give you just a moment. So if everyone can just hang tight here for a second. I don't know the best way. I don't know if Ben had talked about, um, I'm going to guess if you want, since this is really a town hall, we don't really have a lot to necessarily present. But if there are questions or if you'd like to ask a question or speak, if you want to put your name in the, in the chat, that might be a way for us to just sort of go down the list instead of having to raise your hand. Um, we can kind of go to the chat and just go down the list. So if you're hanging by and you want to put, or, or you can put a question in there if you'd like. Ben, do you want to add anything else to that? And we can kind of repeat that a couple of times as people kind of enter. We have about 15 people in this space currently.
Okay. Yeah. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yep.
Good. Um, yeah, Kevin, I, I jumped on just as you started talking. So I hope I'm not going to repeat everything you just said, but uh, first of all, uh, thank you to everybody who's joined us for this, uh, budget town hall. I believe at this point we have at least one other town hall scheduled uh, later in the budget process. Um, I would like to take just maybe three, three, four minutes. Um, do a brief explanation of what brings us to this place. And then I'm going to ask my colleague, uh, Kira Acker to, um, uh, maybe provide a little bit more of a, a data overview, uh, from a budget standpoint of where we're at and why we believe we need to take some steps to, uh, uh, do a course correction for Tom Water School District. So, uh, by way of introduction, my name is Ben Rick. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Um, I got to the district here this summer. Um, as I started with the district, um, I engaged in, um, some pretty deep financial analysis in the first couple of months that I was here and it became pretty clear. Um, that the district had developed a pretty significant structural operating deficit. What that means is just simply that the district, was, was and is spending more than it's bringing in on an annual basis. Um, I also noticed by the way that most of the trends and things that are happening uh, in Tom water are very similar to what we're seeing across the region and across the state. Um, lots of school districts in very similar situations. And so if you're a member of the community, you've probably read about some of our neighboring districts going through very similar phenomenon, uh, whether it be Yelm's or, um, the Olympia School District, or as you get further north into Pierce and King County. Um, it is, it is more likely than not that, uh, school districts have engaged in pretty significant cost cutting over this year and last. There's a couple of potential reasons for that. One of them we think is that, um, the legislature's funding model for our school districts probably needs some strengthening. Um, uh, we feel like the programs and services that we offer in Tom Water are strong for students. Um, and we are not by any means anxious to reduce those services, but, um, the ongoing revenue structure that the legislature makes available to us just simply does not support, um, the level and the level of expenditure. Um, the other is that, um, whether it be Tom Water or a number of districts across the region, there does seem to be a little bit of a post pandemic, uh, factor, um, where school districts for quite a while, particularly in the South Sound had pretty stable student enrollments and, um, you know, did not experience a lot of volatility, one way or the other. And then the pandemic came and the pandemic had a very profound impact on, um, the choices that families made about where, uh, their students, um, access public education. And so what happened is after the pandemic, when families, uh, and students started to reconnect in a, in a, like an in-person bricks and mortar way, uh, to their public education system, um, a lot of them moved or a lot of them, uh, took up new options. And that caused a lot of districts to experience pretty significant declining enrollment after the pandemic. Uh, the problem was is that for a number of the years during the pandemic, uh, school districts received pretty robust funding from the, uh, federal government to maintain the level of program and service that they had before the pandemic. Uh, but eventually that funding went away and that was true for Tom Waters, true for, uh, most districts. And so the districts are left with that higher level of expense associated with the staffing that they had before the pandemic, but maybe not necessarily the full enrollment complement to, um, to justify that low staffing. So at this point, maybe open the floor and ask Kira to add anything, um, maybe here to give them a sense, uh, give our members of the community a sense of, uh, the size of the problem and some of the steps going forward.
Yeah. So, you know, as Ben was talking about, um, you know, our, our expenses have, have exceeded our revenues for, um, definitely from last year in 2324, we were, uh, we ran a deficit of about $4.5 million. Um, this next year moving in, in 2425, we're expecting about the same, um, maybe around four million. Um, and again, for all those reasons that Ben talked about the, um, the adjustment in enrollment, you know, that the decrease or the shift in enrollment, um, since COVID, there's probably about, um, around 250, 275 students that just didn't come back. Um, and so, you know, we've been adjusting our, our budgets as much as we can moving, um, moving forward. Um, but even still now we lowered our, our enrollment numbers for this, um, for this year for 2425 and we're still, um, seeing a, you know, below budget or about 40, um, 40, uh, FTE, um, students below budget. So, you know, it's, it just, it really impacts, impacts those revenues. And then with, when you still have the same, um, the same, um, staffing model, then, um, that's really, it has to be adjusted to, um, to offset the, the decline in revenue. So that's what we're working on now. Um, you know, going through staffing and trying to figure out, um, how to balance that budget and how to, um, build back, um, what we need in our, um, in our reserves so that we're able to pay our bills and able to meet our, um, you know, our, our policy, our board policy percentages. And so that's, that's really what we're working on now. So, um, hopefully that kind of gives you a little bit of context of where, where we're at and what we're working towards.
Those of you that are on the call that are, you know, deeply interested in understanding some of the history of how we got here. Um, the, the school board, um, along with the staff did a, a work session, uh, just, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. It is about an hour and a half in length and it is posted in its entirety to YouTube. So if you have that level of interest in sort of understanding, um, the storytelling of, you know, um, how we find ourselves in the current spot, I would highly recommend watching that. Um, just to give the members of the community, uh, a little sense of, first of all, this is our attempt through a variety of different means to communicate as transparently and as frequently as possible about what we're confronting. Um, some of you may be on the listservs and have received the community letters from our superintendent. Uh, our superintendent started communicating with schools, employees in the community is early as of October, once it became pretty clear. Um, what the school year had, had, uh, in store for us and has since communicated two more times. Um, so it was once in October, I believe, a second time in, uh, December. And then I believe, uh, Superintendent Bogutin, if I'm not mistaken, you, you sent something out a couple of days ago, if I'm correct, before the, uh, before the long weekend.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes. And so as we get new information, um, and as our course becomes more clear, the superintendent's been very clear with us that he wants us to communicate frequently, transparently, and in multiple different ways. So we hope that you're, you're seeing that. Um, but sort of in the interest of full disclosure, just to give you all a sense of what we think is about to happen. Um, the next six to eight weeks is going to be an important part of the school district's financing journey. And we do anticipate the staffing reductions will be necessary. Um, and those conversations will be happening with the school board, uh, starting as early as the next school board meeting and then going into the month of February. So the purpose of the town halls to, to hear from the town. I think we've spoken enough and I'd just like to open the floor either through chat or if somebody wants to come off mute, um, to ask any question that you have. There's no such thing as a, uh, dumb question. Don't worry about that. Um, we just want to be of service to you. You've logged in to learn something and we're happy to do whatever we can to help build some understanding here. If I am going to, while, while you're all might be considering your, uh, questions, I'm going to post that board meeting video, um, in the chat, the one I was referencing earlier. Um, just in case you might want to check it out later.
Hey Ben, this is Kylie Gusterson. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Like there is a question. Um, yes, my screen is not, is anybody able to, uh, Lori, are you able to access that comment and maybe read it aloud or?
Ben, Kylie, Kylie had a, a comment.
So I just had a question. I was originally on the budget advisory committee that was shut down, uh, about a year ago or so. Um, I don't know if I missed communication. Has that, uh, is there thoughts about bringing that back and charging that up again?
Yes. So, um, we actually, I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
It's Kylie Gusterson.
Okay. It's interesting that, um, yeah. So when I got to the district, that was kind of what I learned is that there was a committee. And then, um, I sought to reestablish that committee and the committee has been reestablished. Kind of, kind of interesting that. I don't know why your name.
They've missed you. Um.
So we met three times at this.
Kylie, can you, can you put your contact information in the chat and then we'll make sure that gets you, uh, invited to those?
Yeah. Apologies, uh, Kyle. We, I was working from a Excel spreadsheet of what I thought was the old membership and I literally just, uh, sent out invitations. Did your email change? Does that factor possibly?
No, it didn't. I just got the email today. So either I missed it or it went spam or something, but I still remember saying.
Yeah. Well, I used that same email, uh, listserv group. So, uh, again, apologies. Um, not sure why that happened, but yes, we have met, um, uh, three or four times. Um, and it's been an interesting, very interesting and beneficial conversation. Um, and I just posted that work session, uh, for those that are interested in checking that out. Um, there was a question. Here we go. I was able to explain my screen. So I can see it now. Um, we have somebody on the call named, it looks like Aaron Mountain. Two questions. The first is what is the impact of the state deficit going to have on district funding? Great question. And two, is there a ballpark or range of FTEs that would need to be cut? Okay. Uh, two very good questions. Uh, let's take those in order. Let's do the first one. I may need to phone a friend on some of this. Um, so be ready, Kira. Um, okay. What is the impact of the state deficit going to have on district funding? Okay. So yes, we are sort of wondering the same thing. Um, I used to work in the legislature, so I have some familiarity, familiarity with that process. Um, all that we really know at this point is what the governor's budgets have put out there. Um, past experience tells me that governor's budgets are not necessarily, um, a perfect prediction of what the legislative branch will do, um, during legislative session. Um, but you're, you're right to point it out because the state is, is by far our largest revenue source. So the legislative session and what the legislature does or doesn't do is probably the most, the single most impactful thing that happens to us from a funding standpoint, other than maybe enrollment and then of course passing a local levy. Um, my understanding, and I haven't really torn through it page by page yet, but my understanding is that the new governor's budget proposal while, uh, Governor Ferguson, um, while it does make reductions, it apparently protects K-12 education, education to a significant degree. But, but what that means is it's just not significant reductions. We would need, um, increased revenue to, um, you know, to be able to address this situation. So what's the impact? Uh, the, I think the best that we can hope for is no impact. Um, because they seem to be an arena of, of cuts. Um, and so we'll wait to see whether the legislature follows the, the guide of the new governor. And I, I just don't, I don't know. Um, a ballpark or range of FTEs. So, um, so we're going to be working through that here in the next, um, I would say month's time. Um, instead of giving you a ballpark of FTEs, let me give you a ballpark of costs. That'll give you a sense. So when we did our work session with the school board, we gave them three kind of rough conceptual options. Um, option A was to just eliminate the uh, operating deficit, which as, uh, Ms. Acker mentioned was about four and a half million dollars. Option B was to eliminate the operating deficit and, um, build in a small operating surplus to build back up to the minimum fund balance policy. Because, you know, the, the district will be, um, scraping by on fund balance this year and is not close to the minimum policy. And then option C was to immediately get back to make, make cuts of such, such a substantial amount that the district would immediately get back to compliance. Um, the board kind of seemed to coalesce around option B, which is about roughly $6 million. And so at $6 million, you think about school districts are about 80% of their costs are staffing related. Now we're doing everything we can to try to cut non-staff costs first and have, um, invested quite a bit of time scraping through, um, all of the expenses that we have that aren't our human beings. Um, the challenge that school districts face is that, uh, when it comes to that extra 20%, um, there's about 10 bills, more or less, that are just by far and away so much larger than all the other bills when it comes to basically our insurance policy as a district. Our, you know, our, our energy bill with PSE, um, our running start bill with community college, there's just certain things, bills that tend to be, you know, in excess of $500,000 and everything else is just very, very small. So it is essentially impossible to get to a reduction of the size that would be required by the board to just do it through those means. So you could expect a combination of non-salary cost cutting and efficiencies as well as, as staffing. Kira, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, um, I think that you definitely hit, you know, hit those high points. Um, some of these other questions that have come up too about, um, like when we're anticipating, I don't know if you can see in the, in the chat there, but, um, hours, um, oh, I'm sorry. Um,
The other one from A, the ABH?
ABH, um, yes.
There, yeah, there were two questions. One of when do, when do you anticipate layoffs beginning? And then is it certain that layoffs will happen and can we use furlough and reduction of hours before considering loss of jobs?
You want to take one of those, Kira, or?
Yeah, sure. So, um, the, the layoffs will, um, they're anticipated to begin next year. So for the, um, 25, 26 school year, um, we're starting early. Um, you know, really wanting to give people notice that, um, these are happening. Um, and, and, you know, going through the process so that we can, can work through what needs, needs to happen, um, as early as we can. Um, the, we have looked at all different, and I know Ben will want to expand on this, but we've looked at all different options. Um, you know, furloughs, um, reduction in hours, just, you know, as much as we can do, um, without actually cutting positions, but the amount is, you know, is, is pretty significant so that we've had to, you know, we'll have to, to attach positions to that. But we also do, um, have other considerations for, um, you know, for a part of that six to six and a half million.
Yes. So to expand on, I don't know who ABH is, but, uh, the, the reference to furloughs. So one of the things I think I can share at this point is that the superintendent will be, I will be on behalf of the superintendent. Uh, I think unveiling at the next board meeting, um, that at least insofar as we're talking about non-represented groups, the superintendent will be making recommendations to the board on furlough. So that is one thing that, um, that has not only has been considered, but is likely to be, uh, proposed here pretty shortly. When it comes to represented groups, that's a, that's a very different process and not something that, uh, can unilaterally be decided by the superintendent.
We have a great deal of contractual obligations as well that we have to work around, um, with all of our different, um, uh, labor groups. We have to make sure that we're following, um, a lot of that, of those, those pieces so that we're still meeting our contractual obligations. So, um, that, that falls within those decision-making processes as well.
We have one from, uh, Bailey. Uh, will the resolutions made this week include specific positions eliminated, names of personnel in departments? Also do central office and district support position being voted on this week include? Okay. Good questions. Um, uh, yes. So I'm glad that you called out and I don't know that we mentioned that, but I'll mention it now. Um, the board is likely to consider two separate resolutions. The first, you know, eh, to kind of keep the focus as much away from, from classrooms, the superintendent directed the staff to start the process in central office and in support services and anything that's not school related. And that's where the work has started. And so the first resolution will focus on, uh, those kind of outside the classroom positions. Um, it is likely that a second resolution, um, would come, um, to address, uh, school level positions. So expect that from a timing standpoint and to understand the, the reason for the separation. Um, Bailey, you asked about specific names. So none of these things will have names because they don't. What's happening is that there are, basically what's happening is the effect of this resolution is to say that there are certain positions that will not be funded in next year's budget, regardless of who occupies that position. So we're trying to depersonalize it a little bit. And in some cases, depending on the labor group, um, with seniority rights and whatever else, um, the person occupying that position on, you know, January 21st might not be the person, uh, that feels the impact of a reduction in force. So, um, positions will be identified, but people will not. Um, I'm trying to keep track of the chat here. Um, oh, do, okay. Thank you for answering. No problem. Uh, do central office and district support positions being voted on this week include sped, MLL, et cetera? Um, so the resolutions this week, um, I'm going to check myself, make sure this is correct. I'm 99% sure this is correct. Um, the resolutions for this week will not include any certificated instructional staff at all. So to the extent that, um, there are any positions, certificated instructional positions represented by TEA, that will be wholly through a separate process and a separate resolution. So I think if I'm reading through the lens of your question there, Bailey, you're, you were probably asking about instructional positions and sped and MLL. So I, that's, that's the answer to that. Yes. Okay. No problem. Any other questions? Um, we've got a pretty good turnout. We really appreciate that you all are, I'm trying to give you the answers I can give you. So, um, if you're wondering about something, go ahead and ask. Let's see, did we answer all the ones that? When do you anticipate employee layoffs to begin? That was Tony Copeland. Did we answer that? I mean, basically the actual layoff in terms of when it would take effect varies a little bit by employee, but it's whenever the current year contract ends. So the message to the employee is you have a job with us for the current year contract, but your job is not included in the budget form next year.
Let me just add just a little bit to the kind of the initial question around state deficit. And I think just kind of what we're hearing. One, one problem that we have is our deficit is sort of in addition to the state's deficit. So it's like in terms of the governor saying, um, you know, we're not going to really touch public education. Why are we doing this now? And I think partly is our, our hole and our gap is, um, is not related to that, that the budget deficit that currently exists. And so that's just, you know, we anticipate that the state, while they may do something and, and help us at some point here in this legislative session, I, we're not anticipating it's going to be able to fill the hole that we have. We're just looking at, I know in all the increased costs that are coming, um, to public education. You know, we just heard, you know, insurance rates are going to go up. That will impact the district by more than a million dollars next year. Um, I don't, we haven't heard what, um, and that's not insurance, like actual health insurance. Um, our own insurance, our liability insurance continues to go up at a really rapid rate. Um, and then there's a lot of also unknowns around the future around expenditures. But, you know, that's why, you know, we're doing this early because we know this, we're going to be impacted, um, regardless. And I, we are not anticipating the state being able to do anything that fully, um, resolves the issues that the district faces.
We see large increases in, in health insurance every year, but this is by far, but the highest. Um, and you know, it's, we're not fully funded under the, the model, the state model that we're under now. So the, you know, fully funding being, we don't receive what we pay out for each one of our employees. So, um, we've, you know, that additional million dollars, we might see 25% of that actually covered in revenue to, to help offset that, that new expense. So, um, it's just hard to know, um, hard to know what the state will, will allocate through, um, through the budget process.
Can I add something real quick, Ben?
Of course.
Um, as we're waiting for any other questions, um, in the communication that went out that you guys all learned about this town hall, there was also a link that's just kind of a one-stop shop for you. If you felt so led to contact our local legislators and lawmakers to talk about the school funding model or any other burning issues you might have. There's a, it links to a Google sheet that has our local representatives as well as members of the House Ed Committee. When you could testify, if you felt so led, um, just to make it easy for people to advocate if they wanted to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very much appreciated because the legislature is a huge part of this puzzle for us. And I, as I mentioned before, we're not alone. There's a lot of school districts that are taking much deeper cuts than Tom Water. And so it's pretty clear that this is a systems issue rather than a Tom Water School District specific event.
And I'll just add the timing of that is really, it's, it's, it's happening fast. I mean, I don't know whether that's good. That is probably good news for, for public education. The Senate Education Committee is meeting, um, I believe it's tomorrow, tomorrow or Thursday. It's, it's either the 22nd or 23rd. Um, I've already signed on. So we kind of communicate as a Washington Association of School Superintendents. And so they've kind of asked some people to speak at those. Um, there's four bills that they're looking at at the Senate Ed Committee, all around funding. Um, the fact that they're taking up in the first days really obsession is, is, I would say that is promising and good news for us. Um, I did sign on to those bills as, uh, pro, so in favor of that. And it's around materials and supplies and special education and transportation. So, um, they're hitting the right areas for us. And, uh, so again, we'll continue to see those actions in the legislative, kind of that process move along. I think there was one more question in here, Ben, um, the, and around are the proposals in the recording of the board meeting work session? And I think I know the answer to this is one, if you go onto our website, now maybe you can include that link that you had. Um, you had a PowerPoint that you shared instead of you having to listen to the whole session is here's, here's your PowerPoint that was presented. And then you could find the proposals more in writing, um, that they looked at in the PowerPoint.
Yeah. So the, um, fact I'm on the web right now. So let me see if I can throw that in. So I sent you guys the video. The PowerPoint slide will be at this link here.
And that might be a little bit faster to go in those three proposals around out of an A, B and C. And again, if you listen to the board, they basically, the board, board wants to be pretty conservative around their approach. And again, if you listen to the board, they basically, the board, board wants to be pretty conservative around their approach to this. They, they want an ending fund balance. We're borrowing money from um our capital account this year. For most likely, um they're going to be approving that here at this next board meeting. They'll permit us to do that just so that we can pay our month-to-month bills. I don't think they're super comfortable with that moving into the coming year. So that's. Um that's why they've kind of wanted to, you know, of the middle proposal and make sure that we're cutting enough to be able to pay our bills and have money for next year.
Um Bailey, it looks like you had a question about title funds. Um. So yes, that's one of the things that I've been working on with my team is to look at all categorical funds to make sure that we're utilizing those. Um as best possible. Um you know, as you know, those are. Title um and all federal dollars are um, they're supplemental, and we have to be careful that we're not um. Supplanting and covering um covering expenses that we already have. And so that's, you know, it's finding the appropriate. Most of our categorical funds have already um been maxed out with um. With positions in the buildings um certificated and some um, you know, pair of support with our our various title funds, and there's different. Lots of title money that we can use, title two, of course, is for um, you know, teacher professional development and. Um there's a lot of different ways for us to use those funds, but that, that is definitely one of the things that I've been focusing on and and I'm happy to have more of a conversation. Um, you know, with you, if you have specific.